Call this meeting to order. Um, roll call.
McKnight.
Here.
Myers. Roa.
Here.
Vogel.
Here.
Kinder.
Here.
Uh, pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, public comment on agenda items?
None.
Notice of executive session meetings?
None.
Okay. Uh, can I have a motion to approve the minutes for January 21st, 2025?
I'll second.
Discussion? Roll call.
McKnight.
Aye.
Roa.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye.
Um, communications? Um, manager's report?
Ed Carty from BIU will be attending this week's council meeting to give an overview of how inspections are coming along, if they are facing any challenges, and report how many units have passed and failed.
All right. Is Ed here?
Yep, yep, you're welcome to. Have at, have at. You're welcome to stand there, you can use a podium, whichever you prefer. Whatever's easier.
Uh, my name's Ed Carty, I'm with Philly Inspection and Writing, I'm one of the vice presidents. Uh, thanks for inviting me down tonight to give you a little overview of, uh, the rental inspection that's happening here in the city. Uh, as you know, it's relatively new. Uh, we started in July and, uh, we've got a two-year cycle to get all the units done in the city. Initially, my meetings with city staff were such that the program was be targeted at life safety concerns initially. And that's what we've done, we've gone through and highlighted HVAC problems, electrical problems, smoke detector problems, things like that. Mike Youngs, our inspector, is here also, he's the one that's conducting all the inspections. Mike has a long background with BIU, he's a very experienced and skilled property maintenance inspector. He's been actually doing property maintenance inspectors, inspections and rental inspections for us since 2007. So, he's, he's pretty much seen it all. I'll give you a few statistics on how the program's going along. Again, uh, we started in July 9th of 2004. Mike is averaging between 35 and 40 or 45 inspections, uh, every week. The units, as I said, are inspected on a, an annual curve, twice, twice a year basis. And, uh, there are approximately 200 or 2,600 units currently registered in the city. Our exact number is 2,571. It's kind of fluctuating number, as more units come in, more units registered, uh, that changes. As of, uh, let's say a week ago, 611 of the units have been inspected. So, in speaking with Mike and applying that number, we're on track to get them all done within two years. 331 units of the 611 units achieved a passable status on the first inspection. That's not bad, really. Currently, about 497 of the 611 units have achieved a pass status with approval or conditional approval. The, uh, explain a little bit of the conditional approval in the past units. Rather than completely passing the conditions of the city's code for, uh, existing structures, these units have been given a conditional approval. In other words, Mike has identified some items that weren't necessarily life safety concerns, but were such that he could let those, kick those out to the next cycle. And that's what he did, those are considered conditional approvals. Because as, as I said, we're focusing right now all on life safety matters.
Could, um, Ed, I'm sorry, could you give me an example of, of that, right, that, that scenario? Like, what would that be, something of that nature?
Oh, um, some damaged foundation maybe that's not structurally, adversely structurally, uh, affecting the unit. Uh, Mike can probably give some better ones too. It's just the things that, uh, things that need repair, things that are identified in the city's code that are, uh, required to be corrected, but are not going to cause an immediate hazard or life safety conditions to the occupants.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, with the positioning of a smoke detector, like, in other words, if it's not 4 to 12 inches from the ceiling, if it's 18 inches from the ceiling, is that something would be a conditional pass?
No.
No, okay.
Smoke detectors, we take very seriously, because I'm sure you're aware, they, they're probably the first defense to save people in a unit.
Yeah.
Of, uh, those 611 units that we've done so far, 114 have failed the inspection or are still in need of a reinspection. Some of those also include no-shows. Uh, if a landlord or the landlord's representative doesn't show up for the scheduled inspection, that's considered a no-show. They still get a second inspection without additional fees, but, uh, you know, if they fail to show for that second inspection, uh, additional fees are assessed or there's failures on that second inspection, then kicks it to a third inspection and then additional fees are also charged. So, it's good to show up for the first inspection. Some of the, some of the items that were identified or Mike's identified throughout these, uh, 600 units, uh, 225 of the units had at least one or more electrical violations. And, uh, those, uh, are called out on a moving schedule for correction. Depending upon the severity of those, uh, electrical violations, they can be given upwards of two days, up to 60 days to have those corrected, dependent upon, but just dependent upon the type and severity of the, the violation. Smoke detectors? Out of the 611 units, there were requests or the owner or owner's representative was notified that they have to install smoke detectors in 484 of those units. So, you can see the significance of the smoke detectors in the units and, and the addition of the smoke detectors in, um, but by adding to the, there was a lot of units that either did not have a proper smoke detector, mostly they didn't have the number of units and/or they were not placed correctly. Uh, when we did, when we started the program in City of Erie, that's the first comment we received from the fire department, was that they used to go to a fire and there was never any smoke detectors sounding. Now, when they were going to a fire after the program was initiated for like a year, the unit may be on fire, but there were smoke detectors sounding. Gas equipment violations, uh, these are either improper storage of fuel fires, appliances or gasoline. Mostly, a lot of those violations, I'm sure, were due to improper HVAC equipment. Vents that were improperly connected, hot water heaters that weren't properly, gas hot water heaters weren't properly ventilated correctly like that, or, uh, uh, gas supply lines that weren't, uh, safely piped or in need of repair. Uh, one page, we've, after, after two failed inspections, uh, that's when fees must be paid to the city before we'll go out again. And, uh, the list that I hand out that I gave you identifies the units currently out of the 611 that are, uh, owed fees to the city. Some of the feedback we've had from Mike, uh, so far, everything's been positive. It's surprising, most units are in relatively good condition. So, our, our office has received not really any complaints per se, but more so questions. But I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Um, I, I do have a couple of questions. Um, what about, because I, as I looked at this, at this inspection sheet, um, windows, right, you're supposed to be able to open each window, um, is that something that is being,
It is.
looked at? If, if, like, that particular window was not tried to be opened, right, during an inspection? And a tenant says, "This window doesn't open", do we go and, and, and open the window that the tenant is, is talking about?
Let me see if I understand your question. If the tenant says this window is fixed and he doesn't want it to be opened, uh, is that, is that?
No, 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 I mean, like, so, so, Mike, you're absolutely wonderful, he, he inspected my, my home, right? Uh, so good. Uh, but what I'm hearing, right, um, is that tenants are saying, "Hey, this window doesn't open" or "There is a hole in the ceiling here", right? And, and what, what is happening, and I know that this is a tense situation, right? You're with the landlord, you're with the tenant, but are we checking those things? Is that normal, is that, is that the process?
Those are all being checked. And again, relying, relying on Mike's expertise, that's where he determines that inspection, whether that window or the windows in an entire room that don't open or a hole in a ceiling is such that he fails it and gives the owner at that time X number of days to correct, or he kicks it to a conditional inspection for the next cycle when we start ramping up beyond the life safety stuff and start addressing those items.
Let me see. Does anybody have any questions?
No, I'm good. Report is actually good.
Yeah, thanks. Um, uh, Mr. Carty, Mr. Young, thanks so much for, for coming tonight and, and thanks for, for doing this too. I know even before we, you know, instituted, uh, the rental inspection program, you all were just really helpful partners in getting us, um, able to, to set that program up. So, um, thank you for, for that work and, and thanks for the work you continue to do. Um, I'm glad to hear that it's going well, uh, on, on your end and I'm glad to hear that, I think the thing that folks were scared of is just maybe not as scary as, as we thought that it might be. Um, a few questions I, I do have, um, but one I think is a clarification. Uh, Mr. Carty, I, I think I heard you say the units are inspected twice a year. I, I, I think, but you said in other parts of your presentation, it's every two years the units are inspected. Just making that clear that it is every two years. And then I do believe our ordinance also then extended it to four years, um, if, if a unit passes two consecutive inspections.
That's correct. If I, if I missed, or misspoke there, you're right. It is every, every two years.
Got it, thanks, thanks for that. I just want to make sure that folks, uh, didn't expect an inspector to come a second time this year if they passed. Um, and then I, um, I was seeing in your presentation that, um, there were more units with electrical violations, um, and more, uh, than, than there, more units were cited with electrical violations than there were units that failed inspections?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, similarly with smoke detectors, is that because those units then passed a subsequent inspection?
No, that's, the units with electrical violation, there could have been multiple electrical violations in one unit.
Okay, so that's not saying, so that's not saying 225 of the 611 units? That's saying there were 225 instances?
Exactly, not, uh, you could have, you could go into a unit and Mike could find that the, uh, electrical panel was just, uh, was in disarray. Covers were off and things like that. And then he could go up to the bathroom or the laundry room and see that the proper receptacles weren't in there. So, that would count as two violations.
Okay, okay, I, I think I was confused because of the way I'm seeing the slide read is that 225 of the 611 units inspected, which makes me think those are unique units and not violations. So, I was trying to get clear on that, I'm not sure that I'm any clearer, but I appreciate it.
Yeah, that could have been worded better, if it had at least one or more electrical violations.
Okay, 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 so those are just violations? Okay, um, yeah, and then I think the, the last point I wanted to make, slash a question, I guess, I think to the point I made earlier, right, like you, uh, BIU has been a great partner. Um, and I think because of that partnership, we've been able to stand up this program. Um, and, you know, I think, uh, related to the mayor's, the point that the mayor has brought up, right, as if, if we are hearing from residents, from our constituents, right, that, that there are inspections happening in their unit that they, um, have questions about or, or might not be satisfied with, what is, what, on your end, is the directed, direction we should point them in? Um, is, is that something we handle, uh, internally with the city? Or is there a process with BIU, uh, that we can point them to?
Oh, no, that, uh, we've been handling those now, a lot of them, I know a lot of them have been coming into, to the city and we coordinate with your code officer, of course, or he'll forward those, uh, requests or questions to us. And also, I would say another 50% come in directly to us as far as phone calls with questions. And the questions may be in regard to the inspection report or could be in regard to scheduling. And our staff answers them if it's, if we're in relation to the actual physical inspection and the ideas that are, or the items that were identified, uh, as needing corrections, then our staff references those to Mike and Mike makes a phone call.
Great, okay, thanks, thanks for laying that out. Um, sorry, I will ask one more question. Is there anything that we could be doing to be better partners for you all in, in this work?
I don't think so. I think, uh, to be honest with you, everything's going relatively smoothly in my experience and I've got the, uh, experience in doing a lot of these for different municipalities. This one is going better than most all of them.
Well, that's really good to hear, thanks so much.
Yeah, that is, that is a beautiful thing to hear.
It is.
Does anybody else have any other questions for, for?
Not at this point.
No?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Um, yeah, okay, well, uh, yeah, if, I, I, I do have just one more. And I, I, I don't want to put you on the spot. Um, again, my house was inspected and it was, it was great, right? So, so I just want to hammer this home just a little bit. Um, what, what is, is happening, again, this is a tense situation, you're being put in, uh, right, like a, a situation when people are unhappy where they live. So, then the, the tenant is, is, um, emotional, right? This is a, uh, and believes that when Mike walks in the house, that, that you are like a savior, right? Like, to them. And what happens is when they are excited, uh, um, and they are saying, "Well, this is wrong and this is wrong and this is wrong, will you check this?", right? And then the landlord is there and if we don't acknowledge, uh, that person talking, uh, they feel very much like, um, this is a one-sided inspection, even though you guys are a third party. Again, it's an emotional response, right? Like, this is, this is something that, this is their home, so, uh, is there a way for us to acknowledge these tenants and their concerns without, um, feeling like you're put in the middle of a, of a situation, right? Like, do, do you understand what I'm, I'm saying? Like, is there a way to make it, and again, like, I, I know this is, this is tough because you're in the middle, right? Uh, but i- is there a way to, to, um, just acknowledge their concerns, right? Like, if, um, and if they say this window doesn't open or, or, you know, this isn't, this is not working or that is not working, just to acknowledge those issues at the site? Is, is that a possibility?
I think I believe what you're referring to and the situation that you're, uh, laying out. And, yeah, that happens a lot. There's, uh, units that we get into that the tenant may have identified some problems to the landlord and the landlord is either hesitant or has not done anything to correct them. And when Mike comes into the unit, the tenant sees a perfect opportunity to address his or her issues and maybe get a better ear to get something done. That does put Mike in a bad position, obviously.
Sure.
But I'm sure Mike is, is skilled in this and he, he will try to express that as best possibly between the landlord and the tenant. And it's good that the tenant's there, he could explain that, that even though this, the tenant feels that this may be an issue that they would like to see corrected, he's going to have to explain that this is not really one of the items that are identified in the city's property maintenance code that needs, that he can call out as being corrected. Because again, you understand, this is bare bottom code for habitability, bare bottom. If you, if somebody says, "I, I met the city's property maintenance code", well, you, you didn't meet much, you're not up here, you're way down here. Uh, so, and then also, Mike has the responsibility of letting this person know that you need to understand that we're on round one. Round one, we were told specifically to identify the life safety concerns and kick out the other violations to the next cycle. So, that tenant that may be identifying something that could be, very well be something that Mike has identified to kick out to the next, next scheduled cycle.
Okay.
And it, it may not be what that person wanted to hear, but eventually, if it is a true violation of the city's code, it'll, it'll get taken care of.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, that's actually, that's very helpful to, to hear. Um, Mike, I'm wondering, when you, uh, when you complete an inspection, do you leave anything behind, like literature? Like, do, do, is, do you leave anything behind? Uh, and if, and if not, could you, like, if the city provided, um, some sort of, um, information sheet or, or something about like next steps, should, should a tenant, right, want, uh, um, to call on the city's, uh, interior code inspector? Is that a thing that we could work out? So that you're not put in a position, you know, of, of necessarily having to address that, right? When you've kind of specifically been given, right, the, uh, the charge to, to address the basic health and safety concerns?
I acknowledge the tenant's concerns, but per the ordinance, I don't believe I'm allowed to really reveal anything from the inspection report to the tenant. So, leaving something behind, there's what, 50, 60 items on the list? At least.
I think what she's saying is like more an overview of kind of what, like you said, first of all, you said some things that were, were pretty clear to us, right? That maybe when you're walking into a home, a tenant doesn't understand. And second, right, if you still have concerns, here, you know, here's the city's interior code and, you know, number and you just leave it, you don't have to. So, it's not really about the inspection, it's more of next steps, what you're doing in next steps, right? Like, there, you know, an overview that we write for you to give out, right? Uh, and, and that way they're left with something, right? That they, they will understand the process a little bit better, maybe.
That's about exactly what I was going to say.
Right. Sorry, don't mean to interrupt you.
Yeah, about the best Mike could really do within the parameters of the ordinance and, and what he's bound to do is, is, uh, if the tenant still has issues and probably still not satisfied or happy with the, the inspection, would be to refer, call the city's code enforcement officer.
Yeah. And, and is that saying we could do something where Mike has the ability to leave something for them?
I'm sure I can leave Mike's phone number.
Yeah, okay, all right. Does that answer your question, Autumn?
Yep, that's, that's exactly it, yeah. Again, I think the spirit of that is, uh, addressing the concerns that you're bringing up there and like, and, and recognizing the, the difficult place, right? That, that could put you in, Mike, and, and recognizing too that BIU's been given the directive to, yeah, address the basic health and safety. So, trying to kind of, you know, how can we, you know, so I appreciate you, you know, into that.
Of course. I would add.
I think we should work on a, on a, on an info sheet for tenants.
Yeah. Oh, go ahead, Mike.
I'll do that.
The greater, um, greater portion of the units in the city here are better than Erie's.
Okay.
By a wide, wide margin. I can count on probably the fingers of both hands how many have window issues. The landlords here have replaced all their failing windows. They've all put new gas furnaces in, they've all updated electric. It's actually a pleasure to do them here. I haven't run across any, you know, many really terrible units. There's a few out there. And I really haven't run across any tenants that were fussing.
Okay.
That's good.
Uh, thank you for that, Mike, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Um, if there's no other questions, you can.
You.
Thank you again.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, um, general city updates. Okay. Okay, old business, uh, discussion zoning ordinance amendment dwellings.
We closed this ADRZ zoning amendment, um, expanding the permissible of certain forms of housing that was presented in last meeting.
Does, uh, anybody have any questions for Peter on, um, on the amendment dwellings? Autumn, do you have any questions here?
Uh, I'm reviewing this.
Okay.
This ordinance change, sorry.
No, no, go ahead, you can take your time.
Peter, can you give us just like a high level, uh, what we're looking at?
Sure. You might recall, back in November, the planning commission, uh, had considered, uh, as, under my request, uh, reviewing our standards for minimum habitability of, uh, units and finding that the required floor area, um, was perhaps excessive for, um, encouraging more development of housing in the city. Um, so, uh, that and plus you might remember that there was a request to see about accommodating accessory dwelling units, also known as ADUs, which is a comment that the Crawford County Planning Agency also, um, said that we should have considered in this ordinance, uh, under its first passage. So, in the discussion in November, we presented this ordinance or substantially this form. Um, I've changed around some of the minimum, uh, habitable floor areas to address Councilman Brova's concerns, including, uh, the most substantial change would just be the removal of ADUs as a permissible use in the, our residential district. Otherwise, they would be allowed in the MU2 and MU1 districts.
Can you repeat that last part, otherwise they, they being accessible dwelling units?
Yes, otherwise accessory dwelling units, um, would be permitted use in the mixed use one and mixed use two districts. That's the meat of it, there's a lot of other incidental provisions in here to clarify a few things, like, uh, expansion of, uh, townhouses as a use by right, uh, rather than by special exception, but still perhaps, uh, accommodating those. but still perhaps accommodating those terms. Clarifying that an additional dwelling unit is not the same as an accessory apartment. And also including provision for cottage courts, which is not explicitly provided for inner zoning ordinance, but is represented in some existing developments around towns such as in Hillcrest, to a degree. If council is comfortable with this and would not come to a consensus on any further revisions or requests, then I'd like to ask council to come to a consensus to send this draft to the county planning agency and to the planning commission for their formal recommendations, as is required prior to a hearing and passage.
Peter, I'm so sorry to make you repeat yourself. You, you said, tell me again where ADUs will be permitted?
The mixed use two and mixed use one districts would roughly be our central residential and business areas, such as in, let's see, the area between Liberty, like around Liberty Street, just Marty Park, Pine Street, Lord. Basically, residential areas south of the college, excluding Plateau and areas on the outskirts. If you like, I can show you the map.
Or, correct me if I'm wrong, when you took us consensus of council, majority said they were okay with them being in all the neighborhoods, right?
I frankly don't recall that council came to a consensus on that point. If you'd like to come to a consensus on that now, to settle the question, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, no, I think that Autumn, myself, Gretchen, and Larry, didn't you say you weren't opposed to them being in, like, Hillwood or things like that? That, I think that all four of us, I know Jim had a concern about it, but I think the other four actually said that we think it's fine that they are in all of the neighborhoods.
Okay.
Okay?
And forgive me for my oversight.
Jim did not.
My concern is that if you have accessory dwelling units in the residential, which is really single-family residential zones, then you basically have rendered your zoning ordinance useless because now every zone is a multifamily zone, and I don't think that was the intent.
I think what it does do is it like allows for a little more housing density and a little more flexibility, even in areas where principal use of most lots are single-family homes. So, I remain in favor.
And also, for everybody's reference, in the municipality's planning code and elsewhere, the references to two-family or multifamily refer to buildings that house themselves more than one dwelling unit, rather than if there is a second detached dwelling unit on the same property.
Okay, and that's the distinction between multifamily?
Yes. As the term is used.
Yeah. Does anybody, go ahead?
Yeah, sorry, my only lingering reservation is around the required off-street parking. I would like to do away with parking minimums in residential areas.
And again, for the record, that would be even more deleterious, and so I would be diametrically opposed.
Yeah, I think, and just to clarify my point, I think, not necessarily for you, Jim, because you're diametrically opposed, so I don't think there's any sway in you, but for the rest of the folks, right, that is not to say that folks can't develop, right? If they're building a home or if they want to add, you know, a driveway onto their property, can do that, right, within the, you know, kind of the other parameters of the zoning ordinance. It's, yeah, my interest is in that as a requirement, so saying you must, right? I think obviously there's going to be a value add that a developer's going to see if they add off-street parking, but to require that is something I'd like to do away with and look at other solutions for kind of more concentrated parking in neighborhoods where it makes sense.
And that will directly affect some of the things that we've done in our zoning ordinance, right, where we have made it so people can build on smaller lots. And if we build on smaller lots and there's not enough room for a driveway, right? I mean, that's kind of the point that you're making, Autumn, that we can still build on those lots without being deterred because there's not enough room for a driveway.
Right, right, or, you know, say someone was going to build on some vacant lots downtown, right? Say, for instance, this is not happening in public, but say, for example, right, like, we developed new housing where RODAS is or something, and you could guarantee tenants or homeowners parking in a parking garage across the street or very nearby, right? Like, that's still allows a person to park and have a car without adding the driveway. So maybe there's more buildable space or there's more green space. I think there's other solutions. Anyway, so I'm just interested in doing away with the minimum requirement, not, I have no interest in fanning our driveways or garages or anything like that.
Does anybody else have anything to say or questions on that particular? Joe?
No, not at this point.
All right, and I saw you got your notes. Okay, discussion zoning ordinance amendment tobacconists.
Same thing. Just for the audience's education, this ordinance in some form was also brought up last November and was proposed as an amendment in January of 2024. So, that is coming up now as actually not much relationship to anything going on specifically downtown. Happy coincidences. First things first, how do you all feel about the word tobacconists? Because I've been made fun of for that.
I think it's great.
Did you coin it, Peter?
No, no.
No.
What is it, Tyler?
That's an allusion.
Yeah, it's an actual term that was in other ordinances, right? Like, to the definition.
No, it's just a word in the English language. The problem that I found is that tobacco retailer covers a class of anybody who sells cigarettes or products, and smoke shops implies something that is exclusively dedicated to smoking paraphernalia, where we know that there is an expanse of other paraphernalia that can be used under this. And like in our same skill games discussion, can be set aside so long as you, you know, fake some used furniture or whatever else, or don't call yourself a smoke shop, like some do. So tobacconist, I thought, while antiquated term actually captures a retailer that does significant trade in tobacco products and related, even if it doesn't, you know, dispensary also has a certain connotation. That doesn't capture the variety that these businesses can take, so I was just like, let's call itself classy.
Mike, got it. Well done.
Here's a question for you, Peter.
Sure.
I've read the definition of tobacconist, and there is a significant number of products that do not have nicotine in them, and I don't think they would be covered by your definition. You say similar form and effect, but the argument would be similar form means by definition it has nicotine in it. And there are vaping products that have no nicotine at all.
Let me check on this, please. I'm sorry, I'm getting my papers all. Next up.
I think the definition you give of tobacconist just stands beyond nicotine.
Yeah, truly.
Products, right?
Let's see what I, no, this is a good question, I might as well get. Any form of tobacco, nicotine, cannabis, or consumable derivatives thereof or similar natural or synthetic products of comparable form and effect. So what products do you envision that would escape this?
There are vaping products that do not have cannabis, do not have nicotine. They're simply a liquid with some kind of taste and aroma to them. So they wouldn't have any effect on the body, like a contact tie or anything like that.
And you think that should be regulated under this?
No, but if I were going to open up a smoke shop or a tobacconist shop, I'd say, well, I'm exempt from this provision because I don't sell any of those products. I sell other vaping equipment. And other vaping products, I'm not, I'm not subject to your zoning change.
If you're not selling anything with tobacco, cannabis, or anything of that nature, right? Are you a smoke shop?
Yeah.
So they've said that they're vaping, you're a vape shop.
That I can agree, but it also says, you know, it's pretty, it's pretty, it says vape liquid, cigarette cigars, edibles or related consumption, delivery devices such as glass pipes and vape pens, smokers paraphernalia, such as rolling papers, additives, flavorings, cutters and grinders. I think it's pretty.
Well, but if you take it with the phrase immediately above it, the natural synthetic products of comparable form and effect, which those aren't.
Yeah, I would say that this ordinance was not intended to capture anything that turns into a vapor that you can inhale. I mean, like, this, selling neti pop or whatever is not going to matter to this. I would say that all of those are, if that's what a retailer sells, they're not these products, they're not a smoke shop. They can hang a shingle or whatever saying, you know, a smoke shop, but just like, I don't know, root beer isn't beer.
Truly, and they just aren't a tobacconist. I mean, they just don't fit in this definition, so, yeah.
I'm good with the definition, the way that it's laid out. The curveball I will throw, Peter, and I'd love to hear your thoughts on this.
Sure.
Rather than permitting, rather than permitting as a principal use, principal permitted use in GBM and EDC, what are your thoughts on allowing by special exception in all zones? So that no matter where a tobacconist was going to open up in town, right? Like, they could do it, but they'd have to go in front of the zoning hearing board and go through that process.
When you say all zones, under our current ordinance, that would be inconsistent with residential zone, the campus institutional zones, and the special institutional zones where the hospital is as similar retailers are prohibited from those zones.
Okay, so currently, sorry, currently, we're saying by special exception. Where? I'm not seeing.
That would be on section two, principal permitted uses as by special exception in the general business and manufacturing and in the economic development corridor district. Those would be the districts to the west of the bypass along Park Avenue generally, up until it gets to downtown, and then North Street to State Street to Washington Street generally.
Right.
So, two districts as originally proposed, EDC, GBM. Would you like to explore it being in MU, in downtown, the MU three district?
So I guess, sorry, where is, maybe I'm confused by what we're looking at. Where is tobacconist proposed to be permitted?
In the GBM and the EDC district, principal permitted use.
Sure, by special exception, but like as a permitted use.
Well, they crossed that out in this, we crossed that out in this zoning ordinance and put principal permitted use in GBM.
Do you don't mind looking at the header? That's actually just.
Yeah, I did a modification of the zoning ordinance, which is a little different, and the header indicates that, so you might be looking at the one I just passed out to you.
Oh.
Autumn, can you answer your question?
I'm looking at whatever's in our council packet.
Okay, yeah, no, it was in my council packet.
I did a modified zoning ordinance, Autumn, and I propose that it be a permitted use in GBM and EDC, not used by special exception.
I apologize, I'm looking at, it was on my packet, so that's the one I was looking at.
And you notice you'll see that this is kind of the direction that this is taking. Either it can be permitted by right in very limited districts or permitted more expansive by special exception in more districts, like the downtown or MU two, the mixed use two district, where for instance, the old CBD shop used to be, and where other places like the, you know, the Quick Stop or. Or, and, or, I would leave where.
What was the driving force behind this? Is it because, are people opening up vape shops because they're hoping that if Pennsylvania legalizes marijuana, that they're going to have first opportunity to sell?
The driving force behind this was when we passed the original ordinance, I discovered that this was a gap in an issue that the public and especially downtown merchants had been raising. So, there's no specific pressures other than that that's originating this at this time. You see a gap, you see that there's pressure that folks have been, and so this has just been a back burner thing for the past year, to actually come to a decision, one way or the other, on this. And, for the record, the other option is to not make a decision on this, to not have a zoning ordinance amendment on this, and they'll just be considered limited, a retail business generally like they are now. That's always an option too.
Autumn, so now that I'm on the actual, you know, we're all on the same page, are you asking for, are you asking for more districts? Like, we should have it by special exception in more districts? Or is that your question?
Yeah, I wouldn't say we're all on the same page, I think, Jim, whatever you're.
No, I meant same actual same page physically, yeah.
It's confusing things and making it really hard to follow along.
Yeah.
What I will say is that my intent here is not necessarily to expand into our one or two or anything like that, but yes, to go special exception rather than permitted use, right, so that they can still happen, but they can come in front of zoning hearing board, you know, to be. you know, to, to be permitted and go through that process. And we're not relegating, you know, all of our tobacconists, all of our smoke shops to like the riverfront, you know, which is what ends up happening. Yeah, that's, that's, that's where I'm coming from with this. And, and I, I do appreciate calling tobacconist, you know, distinguishing, just to the point that you were making, Peter, about, right, like we could just do nothing. But I'm, I'm glad to have tobacconist defined. I think it's helpful and I like some of the amendments to signage that are relevant. So glad to, glad to see this. Is that clear where, where, where I'm standing, Mike?
Yeah, 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 that's better. And I apologize, I didn't realize that Jim put that on, on my packet. So I was just looking at the, they're, they're identical except for a cross out. So I apologize for me being a confusion factor in this discussion.
Not at all. I get it.
But if you're going to do that, one of the, one of the issues, and that's why I did some amendments, if you limit it in the district to within 500 feet of a church, a house and so on and so forth, let's take North Street. Pretty confident in saying this, there is no place on North Street that is over 500 feet from a church or a competing tobacconist or a residence. So it would be a Pyrrhic move on our part.
Right.
So you'd be saying, yeah, you can hit, be here, but you can't because you don't meet all the other exceptions, so.
Right, in the alternative that was included in the packet, I removed within 500 feet of a residence. And that would just be limited to property line of any other tobacconist, church, school or other institution of learning or education, park or playground or licensed daycare, et cetera. Basically where the kids come.
Okay, I'm, again, I'm thinking of North Street.
Sure.
500 feet would take us down to Water Street in terms of being distant from the Grace Methodist Church. And 500 feet the other way would take us basically up to the Quick Kill Station. So.
Well, I think Langs, Langs, right, all of their property would be, it's put.
Probably less than 500 feet away.
From?
From Grace Methodist Church.
Yeah, each one of our city blocks is about 250 feet, but let me test this because that's a, a valid thing, you know, to zone it in. But then, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a thing that, that folks do in other places. It doesn't sound like that's what you want to do where you zone something in, but then add enough provision, like just to be lea, just to be legal, but add enough provisions that it is essentially zoned out until all of the development around it just completely changes. Let me test that though, so I'm going here. Yeah, one city block, say from Market Street to Park Avenue is about 200 feet. So you'd be able to get your 500 feet between Park Avenue and Water Street.
Except now you're within 500 feet of residential structures.
Right, which has been excluded from the alternative that I'm presenting in your packet. Because you're right, it's really difficult to be.
Right.
That was just carried over for consistency with the ordinance that we have about licensing and zoning for sexually oriented businesses, which has been a common template I've found for, for other zoning out of what some would call Sid businesses. But yeah, you're right, it would be difficult to get one because of Grace United Methodist Church between Park and Main Street.
I think we need more work on this.
Right, yeah, maybe, maybe. I, I'm for the special exception. I, I think that's, that's just fine, but I do understand.
But are you being concerned if all of this were, if the special exception terms were scrutinized to?
Yeah, I mean, as, as long as the people have an opportunity. If you say it's a use by special exception and you can't find a single place in those zones, then really what we're trying to do is zone a business out of existence. And that's not an equitable thing to do. Whether we like the idea of that, whether you spoke or not, it's not the issue. It's, there are people who do that, who do, who choose to use those products, want to use those products and other people want to supply them.
I think we need more work.
Yeah, we need more, yeah.
Sure. And if you're asking me to do like a good old fashioned land use analysis or something, bless your heart, I'm in, it's great. It'll keep me occupied for a while.
Autumn, did you have a comment?
Oh, did Jim say something too?
I, I said, I sent her, I emailed her a copy of my modifications.
He, he emailed you?
No, I, I appreciate that. Yeah, honestly, I mean, Jim, I'm, I'm in agreement with you. And certainly in terms of, right, like zoning out a particular business, right, like, just because you don't like the product, because, right, like there, it does draw people, right? Like folks go to smoke shops, right?
They buy lunch, they buy coffee?
And, yeah, I, I certainly don't want to vilify, but also want to, anyway, I'm glad that we're, we're finding ways to, to address some other concerns that are being brought up. I, I do think it's a bit of an overstatement to say like you can't find a single spot to do it. I, I think that like, you know, we can, we can look at, I, 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 I think that there's going to be spaces to fit folks.
If that's the research.
That's a fairly priority. Um, I, I would, right, so I'm in agreement too that obviously I think this needs more work and I would hope that the planning emission, right, I think that they need soon this week, maybe.
Yes, Thursday.
And it would be great to have kind of recommendations from, from them. I don't know if they've had a chance to sit down with this or not, but.
Peter?
Yes?
It would be, it would, it would be good to have, have some input from, from them. Maybe a, a recommendation for, for next time.
Right on.
When, when I proposed that draft, I did make a change from permit, what was it? Significant use to primary.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, I, I mentioned that in, in your notes as well. That would change the interpretation slightly so that it would.
Because there's nobody, we don't have the staff to go and say, this is your, a principal use or rather a significant use, but with primary, it's pretty much self-evident.
All right, looks like you're going to do some work for us and, thank you, Peter. Okay, motion ABC appointments. Can I have a motion to approve the ABC appointments? Kevin Guyer and Jenny Tompkins to the, to the EAC.
I would so move.
Second?
Discussion? Well, oh, go ahead.
Sorry, I was just gonna, we originally had, I'm a mill days on to the EAC and I'm currently sitting on the environmental advisory committee while there's still a vacancy. Current, we originally received two applications for two open seats in addition to Jenny's, right? Jenny, Jenny applied for, for reappointment, two additional vacancies, one withdrew. And so Mr. Mr. Guyer was, was interviewed and thinking it'd be a good fit. That is to say though, that there's still the vacancy that I'm filling that will keep advertising with, with each round of advertisements that we do. So would welcome folks to, to apply to the remaining open seat on the environmental advisory committee. And then I'll get off of it.
Right on. Roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye. New business. Okay, public comment on non-agenda items?
None.
We'll go to council member statements, Jim?
Stay warm and stay care, and stay safe in this weather.
Thank you, Jim. Larry?
I agree with Jim and I also like to thank BIU, the presentation was very informative. And I think it also shows that we as, as council had a lot more support from our, our landlords than we actually thought. It shows that our landlords do care because there was that big argument that we were causing a big problem. But in reality, it shows that they do care and want safe, affordable housing. And I'd like to thank them for the way they've taken care of their, and fixed their homes up. It shows that they care about Meadville and the safety of the residents. And I'd just like to wish Maryanna a speedy recovery and thank Peter again for all the work that he's doing. Because I know it's taxing for me at times, understanding what, you know, where to go with, and he seems to be able to pop it right off and answer a lot of the questions and being willing to go back and go through to give us the best information that we have. And I really appreciate that. And I think it's showing that we as council care about developing and making the city a great place to live.
Thanks, Larry. Before Autumn, I am so sorry, you know, I did not even acknowledge you today and.
Don't worry about it.
I am so, I'm so sorry. I appreciate you being here. Do you have a, a statement, my friend?
Just happy to be back, happy to be settling back into this. I really enjoy this, I really care about the city and I'm happy to finally start returning.
Happy to have you back.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You not being up, you know, beside us, I just like, you know, these seats are always filled. So I just, so I, I do apologize, that was totally my fault. And thank you for being here. We appreciate you being here and your, your voice and your, and your views, so. Autumn?
Yeah, thanks. Hey, Daniel, I'm glad you're, glad you're here. Yeah, sorry that I can't be there in person, I'm traveling for work, but I really do appreciate accommodating me. Thanks so much, Darla, for, for getting this set up so that I could join virtually. Yeah, in particular, writing Ed and Mike, I am sorry to have missed your, your presentation in person, but it was really important to me to, to, to see it. So I really wanted to make sure that, that I could, yeah, that I could make the time. And I'm so glad I did, it was really great to hear how things are going. I'm grateful that we could do this too, right? We instituted a thing and, right, I think it's important to check in on, on that thing, on a new program to just ensure that it's, it's doing the things that, you know, we, we set out to, to have it do and, you know, that, that all parties are continuing to be good partners. So I'm glad that, glad that we can do that. I'm glad to hear that our units in Meadville are maybe seeming better than those in Erie. I hope that remains true in the second year of inspections, right? We've got a whole nother year to go and with, with other units to inspect. So I, I hope that remains true and I go forward to checking in, you know, maybe after, after that second year as well. And, yeah, I'm glad that we can maybe break some, some additional value by kind of directing tenants to, to the resources that are out there for them, in particular SCOT and, and code enforcement in the city. I think that that's like a good, clear next step that I'm taking away. So I'm grateful for that and, yeah, as always, thank you, Peter, for bringing what you, you do. And thanks, April, for holding down the fort tonight and running our meeting. Our stand-in city manager. I also wish Maryanna a speedy recovery.
Thank you, Autumn. Yeah, so, you know, I appreciate everybody. I know I, I say this every time. I appreciate being in a, a city where we care about each other and we want everybody to do well and that we are working together on a shared vision of a place that we can all find our joy, right? I don't think people understand how much I appreciate that, but that's why I say it every time. I love this place, my favorite place to be. And again, thank you guys for, for doing the jobs that you do because it's pretty awesome to work in this building with, with the people that work here, right? Like, and Daniel, thank you again for coming out and being a voice and bringing us your ideas because it's needed and we appreciate you. And with that, I think I will ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion? Roll call.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.